Two, one.
Good evening, everyone. We call the order, the meeting of the August twenty first, two thousand and twenty five work session of the municipal district. We entered, we approved the agenda and we entered into session to discuss matters which will impair on the public safety that disclosed. We are now on item one point four, recommended action, be it resolved, the board of education leaves executive session as per to the work session.
Move second.
On the question. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Moving into item two point one. Open the public hearing on the district wide safety and emergency management plan, recommended action. Be it resolved, the board of education hereby opens the public hearing for the district wide safety and emergency management plan.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Item two point two. Public question and answer period on the district wide safety plan. If at this point anybody would like to make any public comments on the district wide safety and emergency management plan, is there a podium?
Yeah, where's that?
Yeah. We lost it?
No podiums.
Speak, stand and speak. No pressure. Item two point three. We move to adjourn at the public hearing on the district wide safety and emergency management plan. Recommend the action, be it resolved, board of education hereby adjourns the public hearing on the district wide safety and emergency management plan.
So moved. Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Item two point four. Adoption of the district wide safety and emergency management plan and building level emergency response plans. Recommended action, be it resolved, after having given the public an opportunity to be heard at a public hearing, the board of education hereby adopts the district wide safety plan and building level emergency response plans and be it further resolved that the district clerk is directed to file the district wide safety plan and building level emergency response plans with the commissioner of education within thirty days of the adoption, as well as provide a copy to appropriate local law enforcement agencies and the state police.
So moved. Second.
On the question.
One thing just for clarification, I think, as you know, in late July of two thousand and twenty five, and statute came into effect and required the plan both district and building to include the matter in which sudden cardiac arrest incidents will be dealt with. The public plan that we are being asked to approve, as I understand it, does not include that specific language. The building plans do, so we are ready at the building level to address those situations and we will do take whatever steps we need to take in order to update the plan when our consultant has provided us with language. So if we're new comment period, new public hearing, and then file the revised plan with this with the state. I think that's my understanding. Just with confirmation, I'm fine with going forward.
Thank you, Neil. All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Abstained, motion carries. We will now move into our work session. And that is a discussion presentation on the capital project update, so I will turn it over to assistants who are headed for business, Denise and Eric Tinkoff.
You're up. Okay. Good evening. So before we begin tonight's update, I'd like to take a moment just to recognize the tremendous effort that the district has undertaken. This is probably definitely undoubtedly the most work that we've ever accomplished in just a few short months. And I'm proud to say that it has to do with our partners KG and D, Triton. Also, the work of our director of facilities, Brad Kennedy, who has just taken meticulous oversight of the project. He is involved in every detail, working to keep us on track and moving forward. Of course, I also want to commend our custodial staff, who has been putting in extensive hours and really showing remarkable flexibility to adapt to the construction around us. And lastly, just my office team, who's been doing so much work behind the scenes. And also our community, who I spoke to a community member the other day. They said sometimes summers are tough because of all of the work that's going on and the inconveniences that it somehow sometimes causes. So I just wanted to also just thank our community for being so flexible and understanding. And with that.
Well, she's far too humble to say it. This is also doing no small part to the institution. Truly stellar job.
Thank you. And I mean, it's, I, all I can think of is it takes a village. I mean, every single person near the district is participating in this, in this progress. So with that, I'm pleased to introduce Walter Hauser, who was the principal at KG and D and the man behind the design. Also Sarah, who could not join us. She had to leave to bring her son to school. And then also Joseph Nettz and Ariana Mazura and Kevin Sawyer. Kevin is the principal at Triton Construction. And Joe and Ariana are our onsite team here. And they are going to walk us through the project, through the presentations tonight show us what's been done so far and what remains and underwet. With that, I will pass it to Joseph.
Yeah, you got it. Yes, I'm just gonna bring you guys through kind of an update of what we've done over the summer. Maybe a little bit about what we've done since we've been on site since last year. This was a jam packed year. Since I arrived last summer, we have done incredible amount of work. A lot of the work that we maybe originally intended to do when the bid first opened was pushed to this summer, so we have been working really hard to get everything done. And I think we've done a really great job. I think most of the work is going to be substantially complete before your students arrive back. And obviously, everything's going to be safe and open for them when they arrive for the new year. So that's, it's, I think we're doing really great so far. Let me go through, we're gonna do and show you some progress photos. We saw all the spaces on water before this, but not everything. So definitely, we want to show you the highlights of what we've accomplished so far. We're having a budget a bit. We're gonna talk about everything we have left to do and kind of our closeout process. We are on a, we have a tight closeout time went towards the towards the fall. We should be out of here relatively quickly once school begins. And then we're just gonna go over the actual milestone project and show you kind of a broad overview of everything we've done so far. So let's go through. So first, the athletics project is probably the least we saw on walkthrough. We obviously renovated fully Spencer Field. We have a new, a new turf field, a new track, a new concession stands, bleachers, press box, sports lighting, a new pathway. We started paving the pathway and driveway today to Spencer Field. We're nearly there. We have to finish a few touchups, you know, get railing in, safety netting, all the final touches there, but we're, we're there. Next Wednesday, we're gonna finally balance all the musco lighting and get, get up, get that ready for, for school. Yeah, we're, we're getting near the end with Spencer Field. I'm hoping that most of you have, have at least taken a peek at it from the district office and seen how quickly it's, it's gotten really impressive looking. The concession stand as well should be just about ready for next week to be fully functional. We're gonna get department of health in there and, and get it going. Other, that project obviously is PVC middle school. We looked at it a little bit and walked through. That turf field is gonna be wrapped up in the next couple of weeks. We're doing turf on Monday, obviously. So very quickly, that's gonna have the same kind of transportation as Spencer Field. And yeah, we're expecting it to be fully finished in early September. Again, that started right when summer started, so we've had that access to that for two months. So it's been a lot. We've done all the whole space, but drainage underneath. Did a curve all around the field, did retaining walls. There's been a lot going on there. Almost done. Just give us a few more weeks and we'll, we'll wrap it up. We did some other, you know, security upgrades, cameras for Spencer Field. Some access controls for doors around, around, around the field too. That's a part of the project bid. We just used some fields. Obviously, I haven't seen it. These are nice terrain shots that Brett took for us that really show off how great the field looks. I think the design of the turf looks wonderful. Again, that, that path coming up is getting paved right now. So I mean, even the next, you know, week or so, it's gonna look totally different. And we're getting towards the end of it.
Still uphill.
Yeah. We have the new turnstile, so you can actually, one could like get into the field without actually, you know, going through with access. We can lock that completely and have it go either way. But yeah, there's the track that's fully striped. All of the turf is laid out, all everything stitched in. The concession stand is, is up and running. All of the, the electricities, the field has been turned on. It's for the permanent service. So everything's running. We can get everything going with networking and stuff and have everything full and functional then very shortly here. And yeah, I, I think it looks great. We just have a little bit more to do with Spencer Field and we should be here with it. I, I hope all of you get a chance to go, to go see it. Kind of a third of our project is the, the roofing, the roofing project that we did. A lot of this was completed last year, but the remainder of it was completed over the summer at CET, preparing all of the roofs for the new mechanical equipment over the kindergarten wing. We are just about done with it. We're closing out the roofing contractor. So that's really the last piece. We just did a bunch of listing closeout. But this project went exceedingly well, I think. We did a chiller work on PVC, extensive work on the roofs at PVC in Frontmore High School. And I think it turned out great. And just timelines, we, we hit exactly what we wanted to and definitely on budget with it. Here's some photos. That's the new chiller on top of PVC middle school. You can see the new EPDM roof underneath it with block beds. It's really accessible and really nice up there. District wide, that's a bulk of what we saw in our walkthrough. Obviously, the high school, the big pieces here are the cafeteria and the ILC. Expecting to wrap those up in a few, in a few weeks. If not, the next week, we have the department of health scheduled for Monday for the cafeteria, so expect that to be fully ready for food service when school opens. We did an extensive, there's a lot of equipment in there. It seems, you know, I know it's just a little, it might look like a little bit, but there's, there's a lot of pieces in there. We've done major upgrades to the capabilities of, of the food service space. You should definitely have so much more flexibility, especially now that you don't have to, you know, bus in food from other places. It's gonna be, I'm sure the food service staff will just be so pleased with it because there's so much available there. We did a cafe bar. That whole new cafeteria space is renovated. We're gonna have beautiful furniture. All of these third floor, third floor sign terms are completely renovated, new painting, new floors, new ceilings, new lights, new casework. Just really refresh the space and they look really great. Tomorrow, we are milling and repaving the high school courtyard or high school parking lot. That was originally alternate. We decided to go for it because it definitely needed it. We're gonna re-strike it. So it'll look really nice there. And then we definitely disturbed it because we took out that big oil tank in the parking lot over the summer. So a lot is going on. We also have the courtyard. We just poured concrete for. We're gonna finish out, finish that up with a, a new plaza of pavers similar to the PVC courtyard. And then right next to it, obviously, is the walk-in freezer that leads into the high school cafeteria. It just in, and obviously, all of this has started within the past three months. So like, this is, these, these exterior side improvements, there's so much going on those two last three months. It's a lot. Security vestibule, obviously, a complete remamp. We took out exterior walls. It's a brand new entrance. I think, I think it's a great choice for the district to renovate because it's certainly a concern for everybody and it's just flow wise, getting students in there, you know, we obviously, we're there all last year and it, it will work so much better. But yeah, that same thing will be wrapped up in a week or two. PVC middle school and incredible amount of abatement. A lot of asbestos has been removed. So many spaces are being renovated. New mechanical upgrades were huge. We did obviously an incredible amount of four and your fifth grade and sixth grade with both the classrooms, the hallways, the cafeteria and that whole lobby area. We, you know, a lot of, a lot of PVC you see right when you walk in, all of the improvements we've done. And obviously, the, the exterior courtyard, the walk-in freezer, all of the side improvements, we didn't see on the walkthrough, but we did a, a brand new stairway outside the building that leads out to the, the adjacent street. There's, there's a lot that's been going on in just a few, few short months. Was it in the flex renovation, obviously? A great space that's finished now. We just have a bunch of stuff to do. And then we have a lot of miscellaneous rooms that we did, the teachers' hub, the upper health or upper stage room, that'll be an English classroom now. And yeah, a bunch of mechanical improvements in smaller rooms that really needed it to get fresh energy. These are some photos, obviously, we just saw the ILC. It's the kitchen and the courtyard. Yeah, sure.
Take a good rest, babe. This looks AI generated, doesn't it?
Yeah, it looks awesome. Those, those lights on that hallway will come up a bit to kind of meet the soft height. They're a little low right now. We're gonna adjust them to go up. So it won't feel so close to your shot, you know?
That's the living, well, that green part in there of the court.
Yeah, there's the plastic on the floors. There will be the, yeah, actual light month or an event underneath so you can sit under it.
That's so cool.
All of those walls obviously fold into each other. Huge undertaking, so much structural steel that we had to put in to make that work. And fixing the floor and, and getting everything set. It's a, it's a really fancy, top of the line system from Germany. It's, it's really amazing. Is the kitchen, obviously. Almost done just doing final connections and getting everything wrapped up for department of health. The courtyard, we just need to do papers in that, in that little area there. We have our new staircase to our court elevator. We're gonna do some, some plantings there to finish it out. The whole parking lot is getting milled and repaved and resurfaced, sorry, and re-stripped, so that'll look really great. We'll get new signage, speed bump, you know, refreshed and stuff. That's the, the cafeteria from a few days ago. Looks even better now. We're gonna get case work finished and then all of our furniture in.
And that centerpiece is the cafe bar?
You're looking, yeah, that's, that'd be, yeah, it's in place now. Yeah, so a full, a full cafe bar that will be open seating on the benches around. That's the walk-in freezer. It's, it's very big. We're gonna, we're not done with it. We're gonna put kind of a shield around it or a, a screen in front of it. So you're not always looking at that stainless steel. It'll, it'll be a little bit obscured. We're gonna install that. That's an example of one of the third floor classrooms that we saw with Brandon Casework going in right now. Brand new ceilings painted foreign. There's the PVC courtyard. Looks even better. I can refer with the pavers. We're gonna get concrete for there tomorrow. Things, things move very quickly. I'm gonna do plantings all around. And in the circles, there will be kind of large bushes and plantings in there. This is the teachers' hub. We've painted it since then, with the put-on flooring and do case work at a sink. That's the flex suite, which is mostly completely removing furniture in there now. CET, just real quick, we've done a lot here. This was, I think, kind of the other half of, of the biggest piece of the summer work. We did a full gym renovation that we saw backwards, partitions, wall mats, new exterior doors with access controls. Just really much needed updates. The library fully renovated. New mechanical on the roof, using the existing diffusers into new. It was really a transformative way to keep the space as it was, but also refresh it to make it look brand new and we're at space where everybody wants to gather, you know? Brand new shelving, brand new case work. The courtyard, we saw, obviously, we just have to do some plantings there and put up the shade sails. Definitely think that we're gonna be done with it within the next week or two. The multipurpose room was a huge undertaking as well. An incredible amount of duct work, mechanical work in the ceiling on the roof. Really opened that space up and just gave it the refresh that it needed. New flooring, painting. I think it looked really good. Kindergarten classrooms, obviously, we added air conditioning. It was a huge goal for the school. Everything is, is done, complete, full and functional. We did carpet painting. Everything's put back together. It was the first thing we kind of tackled, you know, it was super important for the district and I think they turned out really great. We did, we did flooring, doors, painting all throughout, new replacements. It, this was a very spread out project and we kind of tackled every inch in that building through the summer and through the past year. And yeah, we're, I think we're looking really good. We have the bathrooms to complete. We just hit the paints, put up partitions and soap dispensers and we'll be out of there. What else do we have? The transportation facility, we are closing out right now. We did a diesel fuel detection system, nudity chargers, which we kind of, it was the last piece of it. Most of that work was completed last year. And then just kind of aside, what?
And expansion also was a lot, repaving.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Just as an aside, we did remove all of the old underground oil tanks from all three schools, which is a lot, but they're, they're out and we, we had them safely removed. Here's some pictures of CET that we saw on the walkthrough before. That's the library with much less books in them. The multipurpose room with that new flooring. Brand new ceiling.
Bathroom.
Here's a nice shot of our courtyard. The new playground, doing rubber servicing on, on Monday, so that'll be quite soon. This is an example of one of the kindergarten classrooms, new carpet, painted, new ceiling lights. There's the bathrooms with that nice tile relux. I think it's a great choice. Again, this is just a recap of what we did for the transportation depot. Only parking lot expansion, structural service, fencing, retaining walls, kind of a, really just a, a brand new set. We're going to budget anything, anyone who wants to add about the project, you know, even recap that I missed.
But turns on.
Yeah.
Well, Joseph, I think you covered a lot.
I know, yeah. There's a little.
As you're talking, I'm thinking about the work that's happening. And there's a lot of infrastructure things, I'm sure, that people needs, but I go back to the future facilities committee and the visions that were put out years ago. At this point in the project, there's a lot of anxiety about finishing. We have a finish line in front of us. But we also have the time to start to step back all of a sudden and these spaces are coming to life. And they're really gonna be transformative for what happens around the school. And I'm very excited to see the students' reaction when they go into the innovative learning center, the new cafeteria where the courtyard and that CET. And there are so many spaces around the district that are totally different than they were two years ago. So congratulations to you all, congratulations to the future facilities committee. And thanks to everybody here that works on our, this project. But we, we, as we are able to step back now, it's, it's truly exciting.
But I was wondering if you wanted to take a minute and talk about some of the things that the district did, some of the things that we didn't see during the walk.
Absolutely. So besides the capital project, we took on some other work this summer. The high school main gym, we painted, little update and dried with, you know, colors and stuff. We also were able to add a video screen, new scoreboard, shot clocks, and some other stuff there. Turned out real sharp. At CET, we were able to replace the two rooftop units for the art music rooms and we were able to get AC into those two spaces. In room six at CET, which is part of one of Rachel's programs, we were able to put in some cabinets in the sink that the teacher requested for her program. We, we did, oh, we did a ton of paintings, both contracted and in-house. We sort of caught up to the construction and we're running out of stuff to do, waiting on them. So we started in-house painting. We did some duct cleaning, contracted out at the high school here. We have some stair tread replacements. What else?
Athletic trainers.
Athletics trainers room. We, there's been, for five years, they've been looking for a trainer's space. We were able to change one of the girls locker rooms that wasn't getting utilized that much. We turned that into a trainer's space and we painted it to match the gym. Case work, trainer's table. It all blends together. What else? We did, we did a lot this summer. Furniture. We refreshed Chase Itter's room, painted it. We did new code base, took out some built-ins. I don't know if we did it yet. We have new ceiling tile for the dark room. That room got painted. Mickey's been doing a ton of work too. I can't think of it all.
That, that film you said, that heat resistant film, windows.
Oh, at third floor at the high school, there used to be some window tinting that was on it that was peeling and those rooms were getting renovated. We ended up peeling all that off and we're re-tinting all, all those bathrooms. And there's a thermal reduction there. So we'll get some the heat, the heat won't be as bad as if it was playing. We you're gonna put me on the spot. Everything's blending together. We did a lot, a lot, a lot of stuff. We put up new cameras in the main gym, huddle cameras for volleyball on the baselines.
And has the entire security system.
We did, yeah, we did some, we, at the district office, we added ADA door openers. There was one on the exterior door. We put one coming to the vestibule and also into the office.
On top of all regular.
We replaced one of the transportation department's containers, storage containers that was past its useful life. We put a new container up there. We are getting delivery of a new bus lift that's going to be installed next week, I believe. We put an epoxy floor in the mechanics bay. We, they smoothed that epoxy debt. So it's real nice up there where they're working. We did.
You're putting the capital projects to me.
There's more on that thing. But yes, we were very busy on top of the capital strategy.
We're all proud of you.
So it's, it's a lot. He never sleeps.
Yeah. Before, before we go to the budget, there are a couple of questions or comments on, but Joe brought in observations from our walk. So my one question, really maybe it's not so much for Joe, but maybe it's for Denise. Previously, we had had one kitchen at PVC, satelliteing to the high school and through CET. So what I understand is that the kitchen space that we saw at the high school will be fully operational contained, meeting all the needs of the high school. And what happens, my question for Denise, how will, where will the food be prepared for CET and transportation? Where do we expect that to be?
My own, yes, yeah. Okay, so I actually met with the new food service director from Aramart yesterday and we talked about that. Initially, because of the size of the high school space, we thought that maybe we would then generate the food for CET out of the high school. But right now, considering PVC has been operational for, you know, the last five or six years, that we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep production for CET at PVC and get focused a lot of our efforts on building the high school program. So this is the first year where we have free lunch and breakfast for all students. So we, and have a universal lunch period on top of that at the high school. So there are a lot of variables and unknowns. So we're going to keep things as is for CET now, but with the idea that once things are moving smoothly, we, we may revisit that.
Okay, thank you. And I know one thing that we talked about, we mentioned, I guess Brad mentioned about adding air conditioning, ceiling P in the music room and the art room. And Joe, when you mentioned or talked about the multipurpose room and things that we saw on the walkthrough, is that that has also been air conditioned. So we've added this summer, multipurpose at CET, kindergarten wing, art and music. And so, and I think we already have air conditioning in the third and fourth grade wing.
So, so Neil, I believe we are fully air conditioned in all spaces except for the gymnasium at CET.
I just know that means the multipurpose are now, is it?
Yes.
Just for clarity.
Yes. So, and then I know to the extent that we have areas in the high school or the middle school that are not air conditioned, obviously. Obviously, given the age of those buildings and their construction, then, you know, well, then. Brad, I asked you to comment, you know, what's, how do you look at that? Because I know we hear from some people that something should be done, but thinking of the structure, what's your thoughts about? How doable that might be as a downriver project? If you have any ideas.
Looking so you're crystal ball.
It is doable, I mean, it. Structural limitations are one thing, there are also infrastructure limitations related to electrical power. The, with air conditioning comes a increased ventilation load. So where do we get that air? How do we bring it in? Um, how do we do the changeovers? So. It does require a little bit of study, there are lots of options of what to put in for air conditioning in terms of systems, there can be localized systems, there can be centralized ducted systems. Generally, in older buildings where if you put the transverse ceilings and walls. We are looking more localized systems, that may be. Something like a unit ventilator or a V R F system that pairs with your current ventilation. It's a little bit easier to put into existing space, but there's a variety, there are a variety of options to buy in it.
But that would obviously should be a new project, a new, you know.
We're doing. Pretty well on the budget, but.
The only other comment I would add is also depending on the buildings, there's also, uh. Like P B C, there's a abatement that would be required as well, so you have the, that building throws another curveball into. Doing that sort of work and having to cut stuff open and get into the walls.
Do you have any questions about the high school and seeing all the pictures?
Um, I don't have any questions, but it definitely seems very exciting and like, it's just like so crazy to think like. I can't even believe it, I feel like I'm looking at like A I photos. It's really cool and I think my fellow students will be really excited about it.
Well, it's crazy, we should definitely have before photos because it makes it even crazier, uh, especially like the I L C wing, it's just, it's, it's hard to imagine that we. Made it into that from what it was.
Can I just say that that comment means more to everyone?
Uh, okay, yeah, uh, budget, um, obviously just as, you know. And then, you know, a reminder that, um, you know, we always build in contingency to the project budget, uh, in case we have. Uh, unexpected, uh, things that we run into, uh, to cover the cost of that, um, right now, um. Yeah, we, we have originally about eight percent of the total project budget built into as contingency. Uh, right now, we have been billed by contractors about sixty nine, seventy percent of the total, um. Uh, contract value of the project, uh, and sixty-three percent of our contingency has been, I guess earmarked to be expended. Um, this doesn't obviously include, uh, everything that we expect to, um. To be built for on the project, which I have more information about that later, but, um, you know, we originally awarded about thirty-five million dollars. Uh, to the prime contracts, uh, the total bid amount was forty-five point five million dollars. Uh, right now, I would say we're definitely in a really good spot, we're financially healthy, we have, uh, you know, um. Funds that have yet to be expended and we're not tracking to, uh, come close to going over, uh, just a little bit of a. Better breakdown, this is, um. All of the, uh, money that we budgeted originally for each project. Um, and how much for any project fund we estimate based on everything, that soft costs, uh, miscellaneous things like furniture, um. And, and, uh, security, we have security, things like that, uh. The, obviously the, the prime contracts for each contractor, uh, and then obviously things like chain orders, um. And things that we run into after the project, so at the big kind of number that we should be looking at is the, the bottom. Forty-five point five million dollars was the original budget, we're tracking at about expending forty-three point three billion of that. Um, it's probably a little less in the past week yourself, um, but that's. Just about where we are with remaining project funds. You know, that's, that's, uh, I think we have everything accounted for at this point, um, we've double checked it with, uh, K G D in the district and. We're pretty confident in the number, um, so that's where we are, uh, financially. Um, before I move on, any questions about this, so, because I know sometimes this is a, a big point to, for, for questions? Good, okay, uh, let me just talk about, uh, what we expect in the next, uh, month or so. Uh, most of the work that's remaining is just buttoning up the spaces, completing them. And then we move on to punch lists and close out, just final details to make the spaces complete hundred percent and perfect, um. Uh, just a, just a few things, uh, for each school, uh, we're gonna get all the furniture in there, we're gonna finish all the flooring. Uh, obviously finish the casework, any final connections for these sinks and, uh, and plumbing fixtures. Uh, punch list things, if we see, uh, chucked the paint and stuff like that, we'll, we'll, we'll have the contractors fix that. Uh, P B C courtyard, obviously, the P B C field, um, all of the landscaping and plantings we'd like to do after the summer is to make sure that the survive. Um, all the interior site work will be, uh, kind of finished in the next few weeks. Cafeteria, obviously, we're gonna have the kitchen launched for, uh, the new school year, um, there might be something that we have to finalize, uh. Right, right at the last minute, but, uh, the space will be functional and we're looking to get V O H approval, uh, next week. Um, completion of all the furniture and flooring and miscellaneous stuff, uh, and obviously the last stadium. Uh, Spencer Field, we're gonna have it, uh, kind of fully launched and I think we're gonna have an opening on the tenth. Yeah, so we're gonna have an opening on the Spencer Field session then on September tenth, um, we're gonna be pretty complete with it next, uh, week or two. Um, so that'll be really exciting. Um, so yeah, that's it, we'll be around to do punch listing closeout and make sure that we have all, everything closed out and, uh, and finished. Uh, maybe a little miscellaneous stuff that we have to finish and that's about it, where we are. Um, that's my last slide, uh, any questions for me, anything that anybody here wants to add? But I like it, alright.
I have another question, but a comment. I was on the board when we did the, the last major project, when we had six hundred. I mean, headed this. This library, did a lot of work, headed the, um, team leadership social studies wing. And I just want to say. Comparing. Everything from the relationship that the district had with its architects. And with its instruction manager and with its contractors and subcontractors. This. From my perspective, has been such a pleasure to deal with all of you. And all of those who you have brought in to work with us. And I think we owe a debt of gratitude to everybody as. Was said at the beginning of this presentation, who's made this so successful? And I think that. When the community, and I'm hoping the community. Will be able to see what has happened, what has been done. Um, I'm talking about the alumni who are gonna be around next month, talking about them. You know, people who just really don't have the sense of. Or if you have an elementary school kid, what the high school looks like and they can come in here and see it, I think. Community will be impressed and amazed as I have.
Well, just a second, you all said, I think we all seconded, uh, it, that just seemed everything along the way and your. Regular constant updates with the detailed photos is really impressive, we're very, very excited. My question is actually a little bit more for administration, now that we are very, very close to completing, uh, this. Um, do we have any information about the health and safety walkthrough before it opens? Can you tell us what that is?
Yeah, so I am the co-chair of the health and safety committee and we have a, uh, a walkthrough, I actually. Let's say Thursday, yesterday, I walked through with our fire inspector and we reviewed all the spaces that were renovated this summer. Um, and the health and safety committee has a walkthrough next. Thursday, yeah, next Thursday at three o'clock, I believe, with the committee. And we will be, uh, architects, construction manager, and we will be reviewing all the spaces that we renovated over the summer.
I mean, I want to reiterate what Neil obviously said, um. The board, uh, had the, the. The pleasure of walking through the, the space at five o'clock today. Um, and it's definitely still under construction, there's definitely a lot going on, uh, but we were able to see these spaces in person. In each of the buildings and. The thought and the cohesiveness of how the entirety of the, the feeling and the vibe in each of these buildings has changed. And been updated, um, and I just, it was very emotional to get excited about. How this is really gonna impact children, like the spaces feel more serene. They feel cleaner, um, the open spaces have been filled with furniture and it looks. More comforting or more comfortable, I don't, it, I mean, when you think of what schools used to look like, this school looks like no school that I ever grew up in or. Or saw, so I want to thank you all for taking the time to, um. Give that much attention to the detail of actually thinking of what our students experience as they move through these buildings every day and, um. And matching the budget to fit that and keeping the timeline and being thoughtful. Because this is, it really just comes down to our students' experience and this, and, and. And maintaining the integrity of the buildings as an asset for, you know, the community, um, but. It just looks phenomenal and, yeah, thank you, thank you all of you, because I know that you all. Had a part in all of this, framing this all home.
Thank you guys, um, yeah, for sure, thanks everybody for being so cooperative, especially Brian and Denise, um, their cooperation is. Unparalleled to other projects I've worked on and, uh, it's really helpful to get everything done, um, you know, we had a year and three months or so to get it done and. We're gonna, we're gonna do it, so, so, um, no, really, thank you.
Thank you. Moving back to our agenda, we will now move, uh, into item four point one. Excuse me, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Juan, good evening, everybody, uh, obviously, it's not a typical part of a work session to have a superintendent's report, but I did want to take just a couple minutes tonight to share. Uh, some thinking and some re-envisioning of how the district is looking to engage with some of our phenomenal members of our community. Uh, in support of the work of the vision map. Uh, and so, as, as some may know, we spent the better part of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year rethinking some of the committees and committee structures. Uh, and I thought as, kind of, start this conversation, it'd be good to take a, a look back in time. Uh, at what the committee structure used to look like, uh, and so you get a, a sense of it there. Right, the wellness and, and nutrition, community culture, respect, health and safety, as we talked about, the building planning councils and environmental sustainability. And as I, uh, got to the district back in January twenty-two, uh, this was the structure that was in place and I have no doubt served the district. Really well for a number of years, uh, but ideally, what happens is as a strategic plan changes, as the work of the district changes. The way that the district engages with the community around that work also changes and evolves. Uh, and so, what we started to see was that some of the prior committees work, while incredibly valuable. Was no longer as directly aligned with the work of the vision map and of the district. Uh, and so what we wanted to do was to do some thinking and some re-envisioning around how our community structure can best, uh. Not just support it, but help to drive the work, uh, of the district. Uh, and so I'm really proud of the administrative team's thinking around, uh, what I'm gonna share with you now. Uh, which is kind of an updated structure and thinking around our committees. Uh, one, I think, and I'm sure a little bit about this back in the spring, one fundamental change that we are now thinking about these. Less in terms of long-term committees, uh, and more as kind of ad hoc work groups, right? Both the, around a specific purpose, a, a specific goal. Uh, and so therefore able to engage with members of the community who have that specific interest or background or. Uh, are looking to contribute around that topic. Uh, and so it may be, and I think hopefully will be, that this time next year, we're talking about the continuation of many of these committees. And the incorporation of new ones, and, and the ending perhaps of some of these, uh, that you'll see in a moment, because they will have completed their work. And we move on to the next phase of what it is that we're, we're looking to do for our students and our schools. Uh, so I wanted to share kind of initial look for, for you as a board and anyone who's watching, uh, in terms of what we're looking for these committees to, to look like. Uh, beginning, uh, next month, starting with a committee at C E T related to literacy planning. And I think hopefully they'll see kind of the theme of the priorities and work of the buildings and as you hear about building goals in the upcoming months and. Uh, and my goals, you'll see a direct alignment to the work of the buildings, uh, to my goals and to the work of the vision map. Uh, as well, so the idea of that committee is bringing together again, uh, faculty, administrators, parents, community members, students. Uh, around how it is that we teach, uh, young people how to read, um, in our system. Uh, looking at resources and approaches, pedagogy, uh, and making recommendations then for future work and implementation in terms of the K to four. Uh, literacy program and C E T, so I'm absolutely looking forward to that, and each of these committees will be facilitated by. Uh, both building level leaders and district level leaders, uh, along with, we hope, some really robust engagement from our faculty. Uh, families and students. And C H S, uh, of course, I think you'll see a direct alignment here to the work that's been happening in the building through the vision map over the past three years or so. Interdisciplinary learning and research, right, brainstorming, reviewing, looking at, uh, feedback and proposals for expanding. Interdisciplinary, uh, learning opportunities of C H H S beyond the eight interdisciplinary classes that would be in place, uh, as students return here. Uh, in two weeks. At a district committee level, I will look at creating one related to assessment and feedback, as the board and the community knows, this has been, um, a goal of the district over the past. Uh, this is now year two of that, um, in looking to have. Conversations, rich, hopefully deep conversations about, uh, best practices related to assessment and feedback and how. Continuing to innovate in those areas in research-based ways helps to move forward the pedagogy. And how we think about the next topic, which is what success means at schools, and I think probably of. Of all of the work of the system over the next year or so, and of all the committee work. I think this is a really critical conversation for us to be having as a system and as a community. Where we take a look at research in K twelve settings, but also in higher ed, um, related to kind of that evolving. Meaning of what success looks like for all students, right, standardized metrics have their place. Uh, that isn't the only thing that we should be talking about, so it's a, it's a standard metrics and conversation. Uh, and so what does that, what do those ands look like, right, uh, and what does research say and how can we adapt that and continue to grow that? In our system, uh, and, uh, in addition, we, of course, I want to continue to be. Uh, thinking into the future about what technology use can look like and should look like in our system. As artificial intelligence, among other things, has, um, continued to push all of us. In terms of how we prepare kids to engage with the world, and so we'll look to put together a committee related to technology, kind of future. Uh, focused, future, uh, oriented learning, uh, that Alan Moskowitz and others will, will lead, uh, and facilitate. Uh, behalf of the district, in addition, of course, building planning councils will, will continue, and as the, the administrative team and they have spent time together this summer. Thinking through how we can, uh, improve our practices, uh, and the quality of the discussions that happen there, um, some really valued shared decision-making spaces. Health and safety, uh, athletic advisory, uh, shared by Christine Drago, uh, with support from Napoleon Kelly and others. In terms of how we can continue to, to lift the experience of our student athletes and the culture around athletics in our district. Social, emotional learning, of course, will always continue to be a priority, uh, in our district, and so, uh, Rachel will continue to, to lead and facilitate that. As well as a committee specifically focused on school counseling. Uh, and that program and supports for students, uh, K twelve, so, um, in addition to all of the other stakeholders. That I shared earlier, uh, we very much love to have board participation on each one of these committees. Uh, and so look forward to some conversation with you guys, board president about, uh, participation. And so what we'll look to do, uh, is to. Package this, uh, and share this broadly with our community within the next week or so. Uh, ask folks, uh, to share with us if they're interested and what they, um, believe that they can bring to the conversations around this work. And then get these committees going, uh, in, uh, late September. Uh, and we'll make sure that we have regular opportunities to share out this work during the course of the year. Thank you.
I think this is great, I just hope with regard, I'm looking at so many, I want to say that, there's a lot of input. Particularly at high school level and many of these committees, and I'm just hoping that through. The high school, to in fact, Congress or other means, we can have. the high school, to in fact, Congress or other means, we can have robust student participation in in basically almost every, everything that we've listed.
Yeah, there's no, there's no question. Students belong in the room in every one of these conversations. I I think uh, you know, one of the things I'm excited about is the level of interest and engagement from the folks who will be leading and facilitating this work because they see how it directly aligns to the work in their buildings up there. Uh, frankly, it's an ambitious number of committees, right? So uh as we start to think about how these get scheduled, particularly when we want to make sure that students are able to be there. Uh, that's going to be some one of the logistical uh challenges, but the team's already thinking some of that through. So, um, and there's some aggressive uh kind of vying for the sake of people to be on committees in terms of the of the faculty and staff. So um, we look forward to giving the board and the community some updates on these soon.
Just want to add a comment. Having served on a number of district committees in like the twelve years that my um kids have been in the school system, it's very exciting to see this refreshing and refreshed approach to um collaboration between the community and the school district. I'm, I'm, I'm very excited to see that um the sort of like building level focus on a topic that's particularly interesting or relevant or timely in uh each of those spaces. I know that there isn't a separate sort of uh focus for PDC, but I believe that that um uh there's, there's a, I mean, there's something that there's like a reason for that, I believe, right?
Yes, yeah, there, um, we've spoken to Michael and Nicole about that. And certainly, there was some really great building level work that's happening, but we've also tasked Michael and Nicole with facilitating a number of the district level committees. And so we want to make sure that they're spread just the right amounts in.
Right. Yeah, no, I think that I think you had mentioned that. So I just wanted to sort of flag that for the community, but to have you sort of explain it because um again, it's like that, that I think, having served again, like I was on PDC's building planning council before, I was on school board for four years and it is a robust discussion space and every time I've been there. So it's good to know that that work will be continuing um at a district level with that uh with that team. I think the other exciting thing to see here is that that the the work of these proposed committees really is forward-thinking in terms of the entire system and in terms of where we want it to go, where we want it to, where we want our students to go, both in terms of their social emotional success and in terms of their academic success. And I think that that, again, to be able to bring um parents, community members, administrators and uh teachers, building principals and students together to engage in that conversation um is significant. It, this is, you know, I think the district is uh is, I don't think the district is biting off more than it can chew. I think totally up for this. Um, and I um, I really couldn't be happier to see this um this evolution. It's very exciting. So thank you for putting it together and great thanks to the teachers, administrators and um district leaders who I know have been working on this plan for some time now. It's great to see uh this information. I look forward to to having the community hear about it and having the opportunity to, you know, after a period of of uh not necessarily having the most robust sort of structure for this, having a way to make that connection even stronger in a very close-knit um school, district and community.
Just to add one other observation, I think what you've talked about, what you're doing lines very much with the initiatives that we see through the state education department and the commissioner concerning, as an advocate said, forward-thinking concerning the portrait of the graduate concerning not ignoring assessment and feedback and tests as we may have to do, but realizing that that is far from the be all and all to determine what success means in school. And all of these um committees will be focusing on moving us forward as a district to define success for all students. And I am, you know, I, I guess, since you've called on the board to be active participants, I personally am, you know, up for the challenges. I I think administrators and faculty and hopefully parents and students and community members will be and we're looking forward to it.
I just want to let you know that Allison, that's our hand, right?
Hi, um, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and I I deeply apologize. I'm joining from Tallahassee, dropped my daughter off at college. I'm having, like, I don't know why my camera isn't working. So apologize for doing it, not showing my face. Um, I want to um echo what Anamika said in terms of I think it's great to have these committee structures and to um outline ways for the community to get involved. Um, I had some like nuts and bolts questions that um maybe are not to answer tonight, but I think that members of the community might be interested in. Um, you know, like, if if it's an ad hoc um committee, I think it, um, I'd be curious to know is like who, who calls the meeting? Is that typically, I'm assuming is it, it's the uh, you know, the principal or whoever's from the building representative, but can members of the community who are part of the committee also bring up issues? Um, and um also, you know, are these, these committees, are they advisory? And um, you know, a little bit in terms of how, like, who gets chosen to be on the committees? If you have like, you know, twelve different volunteers, if you're lucky enough to have that, you know, um, you know, what is the mechanism to to choose that? Um, and again, not to necessarily answer now, but these are some of the questions that I think people might, might have. Um, and um, I have one more question, but maybe, I don't know if there's any if if anybody, if you want to make any comment about that now, or I should proceed to the next question. It's hard for me to see.
Yeah, no, those are, those are helpful. And I think if we put together the community uh update and sharing on this, it'll be uh important for us to make sure that we're addressing those. Uh, I think from the standpoint of the the ad hoc nature of it, um, you know, there are certain logistical, as we talked about, certain logistical challenges involved, um particularly with folks who are going to be on multiple committees. So I think without speaking for all the facilitators, uh I think what they're going to look to do is in those first couple of sessions together, try to get up close to the year's worth of of meetings, uh tentatively put into the calendar. And obviously, if there are uh conversations that need to occur, meetings that need to occur outside of that schedule, then of course, uh there'd be flexibility of that. Uh, and in terms of, I agree, if there, if we're fortunate enough to have um so much interest that we have to say not at this moment, um to some folks, that'll be based on, uh, we want to give folks an opportunity through the the process to share with us why it is that they're interested in being on the committee and what they think they can bring to it uh as in in addition to their availability. Uh, and so that'll be looked at by the facilitators of the committee in terms of who who best represents uh the the vision for the work of that that particular group. But we'll make sure that we conclude that, Allison, in the, in the communications that go out. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and this, the other thing, like, um, do you mind pulling up the presentation again with the, the uh, I think it's the fourth slide? Thank you so much. Um, so, you know, so um, I see that there's some of the, the committees are focused on assessment. Um, what success means in schools, that, that makes a lot of sense. I guess one of the questions that I had, um, and I think the community has is given that the district is doing a lot of exciting new changes, um, is there any plans for any program assessment?
Yeah, I think cer- I think certainly that uh has a place in conversations in in multiple uh committees here, uh literacy planning, interdisciplinary, I think actually all of them. I think that conversation has their place. Um, and I think particularly when we talk about uh assessment and feedback uh and what success means in schools, you know, though, that's going to be certainly a part of those conversations. Yes.
Yeah, I, it's just, uh, let's just say one final thing. Like, I, I do like how under what success means in school has, you know, the last part is beyond standardized metrics, but I do think the community does still want to have some sense as we're going along into the program assessment um or how things are going, like how we are going along with some of the standardized assessments given um, you know, test scores, et cetera. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So I would just like to say that this board, um, my fellow board members, I know we're asking a lot because we like added some liaison positions to like their PTAs and to the boosters and such. And this is, and we're already, I think, feeling the weight now that we've gotten our committee meetings uh up and running and our calendars are filling up with all of the things that we're doing. This is another layer. But um, I just want to thank you all, being on board.
Yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully, we are finally committing to uh to taking a seat on one or two of these committees and
Superboard.
And moving it forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, I mean, I, I echo much of what, what Anamka said. I, and as someone who was on the strategy, I could turn it on, I'm getting loud enough here, so I don't really need it, but um I, as someone who served on the strategic planning committee and and the vision work, uh vision map work, um, the how that that work is evolving to to create some of these committees is really wonderful to see. I think it, it allows us to, as you say, to tap into community members who have expertise in some of these areas. And it allows us to work more collaboratively as a district and as a community. And I'm really excited to see the work that will come out from these committees. So it's really exciting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, and um, yeah, thank you. Moving into item five point one. Instructional personnel recommendation, recommended action, Nicholas Shapiro as a one point zero FTE elementary teacher. Elementary tenure area of Kerry Tompkins Elementary School at a salary of eighty six thousand six hundred and eighty five and a six. Mr. Shapiro is appointed to a four-year probationary intern as an elementary teacher commencing on August twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five, and probationary intern ending on August twenty sixth, two thousand twenty nine in the tenure area of elementary. Mr. Shapiro has initial certification in early childhood education, birth through grade two.
Second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Absent motion carries. Item six point one, ongoing business. Recommended action, the result, the Board of Education, the back-up meeting, and here five adopts policy five, six, nine, five, students and personal electronic devices provisioned as presented.
Before we move it, and I will move it, um, there is one one change in the document, which uh I would like to suggest, one of the committee members pointed out a very slight wording change, which I think we just want to indicate and make before we um move and then discuss. In the last paragraph on the second page of the document, it reads um, at CHHS personal internet and my mobile phones and watches must be stored in one of the designated places and not visible throughout the entirety of the school day. First bell of the school day to last bell of the school day, with very limited exceptions that that the suggestion is since afterwards, it only talks about a single exception. It should just read with the exception that they may be visible. So with that, and that is what, after the committee met um on the nineteenth of August. So with that one change to the document we have in front of us, I will move the policy five, six, nine, five for adoption.
One second. Other question?
So if.
I, I have uh two, two things. Um, under this section.
Well, sorry, um, we're gonna let, we're gonna let Neil just do his policy preamble first. It's
Oh, okay. Sure.
Yes, a very quick policy preamble. The committee um, well, the board received many um um correspondent pieces to correspondence, emails, et cetera, concerning this policy. The board also um, discussed this policy at its August seventh meeting. The committee met on August ninth, or nineteenth, rather, the committee considered those um points and comments that were brought to us and make some, have made some recommended changes. Uh, the first thing that I want to note is that since two thousand seventeen, the district has packed a policy on students and personal electronic devices, which severely limit the use of um personal electronic devices in the schools. Um, as, and that policy is currently, you know, policy book people that review it. So it's not like we're going from nothing to this policy that has been proposed and that's been ruled for adoption. The um changes and, but the reason for us doing a new policy is because with the state legislation that was adopted um, in the budget that uh the state legislature adopted and the governor signed is spring. Um, there were certain requirements that had us have the necessity to reconsider, uh certain, make some changes. Between the first reading on August seventh and the um policy which is before us today for second reading and adoption, there are basically four changes that the committee recommends. The first is that at Proton Harmon High School, um, students will not be um permitted under this policy to and to uh secure their personal electronic devices in backpacks or school bags. But rather, they will be secured in classroom couches and caddies when a student goes to the classroom now. Um, the second is that in the paragraph that I referenced before, where we um, I have changed for the purpose of our consideration, uh the word very limited exceptions to just an exception. The policy has been, if you will, tightened up to say that students will be permitted with the approval of a staff member, this is high school students, only high school students, to utilize cell phones and watches in the cafeteria for a purpose set forth in this policy. So if there is, for example, if there are students who are working on a class project and therefore, for some reason, need and get approval for using the cellphone or watch in the cafeteria, who will have a staff member.
I don't, I don't know that that's to help. I don't know that we should dive into the scenarios in which that's going to be interpreted, because I think that that is something that will be interpreted at the building level.
Sure.
Laura or somebody. So I, I think that it gets problematic when you start proposing examples because I don't know that they'll be allowed to use their internet-enabled phones to do projects during lunch. And to imply that that's something that's going to be allowed? Okay, it's thanks to the public. So I'd rather you not do that.
I, I, I accept that. Obviously, the staff member is going to have to approve, which it, and it's only, it's only for a purpose that is set forth in the, in the um, uh, house.
Right, and that was just significant. I think the reason me I wanted to mention that is because that is a significant change from the way it was articulated previously and from versions that I mean, it can signal widely by the public.
The third change is that in the sentence after that, um, we have uh added to that sentence that students at the high school may use other personal internet-enabled devices such as tablets or laptops brought to school under the high school, bring your own device, E Y O D policy with permission for the staff, by, from a staff member for educational purposes. Um, as this was written previously, it did not indicate that the students who would be permitted to use their own device was limited to those who have or utilizing or bringing their device to school has Or utilizing or bringing their device to school has a um part of the B Y O D program at the school district has. And the last is that. On the next page where the exceptions are set forth. As to when uh students may be permitted to use internet enabled devices. Um they are. If uh it's included in a student's individual education plan on P or section five or four plan. And the others that are listed, one item that was omitted. But the committee felt should be included is that for student that an exception will be made. For students who are routinely responsible for the care and well being of a family member. On a case by case basis upon review and determination by the building administration in consultation. With a school psychologist, school social worker or school council. And that is an exception that is specifically provided for in the statute as one that a school may have. And um if it is necessary, hopefully it is not. But if it is, we will, we can accommodate that student in that specific situation. Those are the changes uh from the um document, the policy that we saw on August seventh. And um we it's been moved for adoption and I think that's just the explanation for the public and the board. And I know Allison had some questions, so.
I mean, before we move on to Allison, I just wanted to ask for Lamina if she had anything she wanted to say about this. And you can feel free to say no, if I'm putting you on the spot, but um we had agreed at our first meeting that we were going to turn to you. And and allow room things based for student quarters.
Um, I don't have anything super pressing, I was just.
Yeah.
Uh I noticed that the security and backpack for school bags portion was deleted and I was just for high school students and I was just. Like wondering what the premise of that was or like. What had changed between now and the last meeting, because I think my felt students would probably be curious to that as well.
So yeah, so that came from um additional conversation that. Uh we had, we had as administrators with uh members of the faculty. Who felt like it would be less disruptive to the educational process, not to involve backpacks. Uh there's also some question about whether or not the governor's office in reviewing some of these policies was going to allow for backpacks to to be used anyway. Um so especially after talking with our teachers, they felt that they'd be better for teaching and learning to have a classroom. It's classroom caddies, classroom patches or classroom.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Allison.
Thank you, um thanks for for the updates, um. I I guess for for me, um I would have a, I I obviously support this, it's a, it's a. Regulation that we have to uh you know, create a policy for, um I do have a hard time. Of um. Agreeing to support this particular draft without having something in it that says exemptions or some exemptions should be. Somehow put in writing, um. I think that this is going to be very difficult to see and understand the extent to which the policy is being up. Upheld, I think it's going to pit people against each other, so I feel very strongly that uh when it comes to. Ex- exceptions um. That there should be some inclusion that this should be done in in writing. Thank you.
So the statutory exempt, the stuff, the the exemptions that we're listing currently in our policy are the statutory exemptions, is that correct, Neil?
It's the exemptions that are in the policy on page three.
Correct, yes.
Yes, or um five oh four and plans and I E P plans. Is in the policy, it is in the statute specifically, as are the uh other five items. That are mentioned there when necessary to manage a student's healthcare. Translation services usage in the event of an emergency. The students who are routinely responsible for care and well being of a family member and that we discussed before and where required by law. So the, obviously, if it's in an I E P. That's in writing, if it's on a five or four plan, that's in writing. When if it is necessary to manage a student's healthcare, I presume that that is something that the.
Nurse?
Nurse, the school administrators in their in implementation of the policy. Will ensure that the student uh has such a necessity.
Often in the five oh four plan.
And it's often in a five oh four. If for translation services, I'm sure that will be documented. Uh that's also administer, that's also um implementation. Usage in case of emergency is in the statute and I'm assuming um that's not going to be. In advance, but you know, who knows about that, obviously, the approval by the building principal of. Those who are routinely responsible for care and welfare of a family member um is something that presumably in. Um implementation of the policy, there will be um some records have to show that that's been done and. But will, you know, that's implementation, where required by law is kind of a catchall which um. Kind of deals with unknown situations. The other thing that I would speak to, because I don't know, Allison, you are addressing that as well. Is that in the section of the policy on page. Four, page five, that talks about the um. Permission being provided by a teacher. To use a person, that a student may, students may use a personal electronic device during an assessment. Um, once again, and the committee did discuss this on in its meeting on the nineteenth with administration. It was felt that whether the, how the communication of those exceptions to. The general rule do not use personal electronic devices, which does not mean necessarily. An internet enabled device, it means any device, that is also the committee discussed um. Uh administration felt that was a matter of administration's implementation of the policy. Um as as adopted by the board and. And they will implement in a way that uh they feel best to get it done.
I just want to take a minute and speak to um. The level of engagement that we received from the community regarding this policy, um I for one. You know, appreciated hearing from the community and how they felt about it. We as a board tried to do so much better in responding to everybody and um hearing what you were saying, it was a result. Of one of uh the letters that we received that this meeting is actually being livestreamed um. And the district was willing to to work with us on that because uh generally summer meetings are not livestreamed um. We tried to follow up with every letter that we got, we responded thoughtfully, we provided information after the policy update. Um after the second policy committee meeting update uh. To let people know the meeting will be tonight, it will be discussed at this work session, um so. To the extent that we've learned from this process and we've learned from our failures in the past, we are committed to continuing to maintain this type of. Communication with um the public regarding these policies, and this is wonderful engagement uh. I thought.
Um, I agree on that about the level of engagement and it being helpful in helping to crack the policy, um I know that. And and I know that the administration is already thinking about this, but just to put it out there for the public that. Um, obviously, like reading the policy is a good thing to do, just to understand what the details are, but then also having other. Uh more easy, easy to read materials for the public to understand what they can expect once um our. Um, our school year starts, I think will be super helpful, just to like break it down and just. Simple language FAQ style, because I think uh you know, it it'll be helpful for for folks and um. Yeah, and and just continuing to to gather feedback, right, about how it's going throughout the year, because we know this is. Not new entirely, as Neil pointed out, um but there are still some like additional restrictions, right, that we're putting on. Um, our students as a result of the state policy and also our work in trying to dig into what will. Uh work for our district, so um I think it'll be uh good for us to just. Continue listening to the community and how it's going and and our student population as well. Uh and to really be proactive about communicating what's in here, what folks can expect uh as the school year starts.
Do you want to speak through the process and I know you have a communication plan regarding.
I think um. I think I'm, you know, certainly proud of the Allison committee and the thoughtfulness of the uh conversation and engagement around this, I think there's certainly been some. Compassion debate by email and otherwise, and there should be, and this is a a sea change for uh a lot of schools. Uh I'm particularly proud of the fact that the the policy committee and the community that we've heard from understand that. Um, there are new, there's nuance to this conversation, and we don't. In my opinion, want a policy that treats a five year old the same way as it treats a seventeen year old in our system from a developmental standpoint. Uh and there are aspects of the high school um that are different, and the fact that there's a a B Y O D bring your own device. Uh practice there is something that's reflected in this policy that's different than other districts, the fact that there's, it's an open campus is different. Than other high schools, one of those that makes us unique in terms of the student experience. Uh community lunch is another aspect that makes us unique in terms of the student experience, so I think it's reflective of all those things, it. It respects our kids, it trusts our kids, and it's also an organic process, we're going to see how this works or doesn't. Uh and if there needs to be changes, then we'll come back to the policy committee, either way, and say, here's how it's living in our buildings. Um and if changes need to be made, I'll also make an appointment, yeah, so thank you for the engagement in the process, I think somebody from the community should be proud.
Want to just chime in after what Steve said specifically about that, because we have had so many robust discussions and have had members of the public attend. Our policy communities as these discussions have taken place, and honestly, this is a process that started back in June. In terms of the formal development of policy and and the solicitation of feedback. Uh I think that the two things that I want to highlight just from our conversation, because. We only have two members of the public at our policy committee meeting, but there's larger interest, I think, in in the topic is, as you said. Uh, policy in general, and not not to make like a big proclamation about it, but policy in general is not fixed, it is evolving. It can be updated at any time, one of the things that we joke about is we come across these policies that are from nineteen ninety four. That doesn't mean that we can't have another one from twenty twenty five for any policy that's in the entire policy manual, so this idea of of something that we're setting. Um in place today does not mean that it's fixed forever, it's actually for a moment in time. The openness of the district, hopefully, you know, certainly the board, and we hope as well the community to sort of evaluate. How this rollout works, what the compliance looks like, how we're evaluating the compliance, how we're actually, most importantly, supporting a change in the culture. Within our school district, um which is a significant change, and I think um working to see the impact. And the effects of this for years and years to come, but having the openness to be able to say, this is what's working, this is what isn't, what do we need to look at? That's no different from actually any other board policy that we've ever instated, any other practice in education. Or in the school system since it was basically formed, I think that this is really in line with that and. The, you know, again, that's, I I would say personally, because I've had a number of phone calls um and conversations and meetings in the past couple of weeks about it, that I have. Listened to everything I've heard, I know the policy committee has, I know the entire board has read all of it, and we welcome the dialogue with the community and. Um, we just. These comments and this feedback um as constructive, because our job is to do this for the community. And to work with the school district and the administration to make sure that it reflects what we want our schools to be, so thank you to everyone who wrote in. And um you know, we'll see how this rolls out.
You have to. Yeah, actually, I have one question, um in terms of the open, open campus and personal devices, will students be able to bring their personal devices off campus with them during free periods and lunches?
Yeah, we we're not going to restrict your ability to use your phone off campus.
Okay.
And that's in line with the statute.
Yep.
I just wanted to add in, as 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 Anamka was mentioning, right, the that this isn't a fixed policy and that we will look to see how things work. Um that from a regional perspective, um as someone who sits on the the Westcut um School Board Association and has had conversations with NISBA colleagues as well. Um, this is something that very much, right, it is, it is a shift for uh a lot of schools. And we will all be looking and learning how these policies roll out in our schools. And ways that we can learn from each other, I'm I'm, you know, I know that that's a a big topic that we had at at a meeting at her West at last week. About, you know, ways that we can see how these are rolling out across and where. Where there are issues, where things are working, where things aren't working, so we'll be able to. Utilize that feedback from from multiple systems as well, so that we can hear. And how things go so that we can best support this policy to make sure that it is successful and make sure. That we are providing a a distraction free environment for our students, so.
So I believe we have the motion moved.
Sorry, I I had my hand up.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I I know it's harder for me being over Zoom, um I I just, I just want to um, you know. Say that I I again, I appreciate like what Steve pointed out, that we have a more, I think, a little bit more of a complicated environment, particularly at the high school. Um, and uh everything that's been said in terms of engagement with the community. Um Neil, thank you for pointing out the part about assessment, I um. Again, I I feel very strongly from the, yes, policy can change, but from. A compliance and understanding compliance to a policy, I think it's very important to have something about written notification, particularly among the. Um, in the assessment part of it at at a minimum, um so just to say in advance that um I support it in theory, but I will not. When it comes to vote, I'm I'm not going to approve this, because I don't think it's um developed fully enough to have compliance in that area. Thank you.
All in favor? Host?
Aye or nay, I don't know.
Motion carries.
Six one, yeah.
I know we've linked on that.
Moving into our consent agenda. By yourself, I'm quite love it, I see people that doesn't even understand, but we are asking to be resolved before the patient whereby approves all of the items that they can send each other.
Summit.
Certainly.
Yeah.
On the question.
Yeah, just.
I might just say that I love it when I see our references come back and work with us. I see some of this in the news.
I mean, I would say in more of a comment, not finish a question, because I know I had. I had raised a couple of questions concerning certain of the change orders, but. In general, reviewing, it goes back to what I said at the end of the presentation by our architects and. On construction managers. Over time, in particular. Particularly with regard to these change orders. I think they are limited in amount, limited in seriousness, seem to be totally appropriate. When you open up a wall and it just speaks again to the work done in the planning. Of the project, the architectural work in our um. Our director of buildings, director of facilities, knowing our buildings, so these are not. Um major, not um, you know. Concerning, and I think that just, I wanted to say that again, as a shout out to Lewis.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, if I could just add, because I didn't mention that earlier, I have to really commend our. Fine contractors, um Paradi Construction and Rosa, also Clean Air Quality, who's, it has a big portion. I mean, all of our contractors have been fabulous, but uh Steve Mercadichian, who's principal at uh Paradi. But, uh, Steve Mercadichian, who's principal at, uh, Paradi and Matt DeRosa, uh, they are working together. Like we are, they are working hand in hand on two separate projects, but always supporting one another. And, um, and I have to tell you, Brad is just, his technical ability and his understanding of projects. Has really, uh, shown so much this throughout this project. He has made recommendations to the architects and engineers because he's so deeply invested in it. And, uh, they, they are regularly impressed by him. He is just an incredible, incredible facilities director and, uh. I, I, we, we, we need to recognize that without his hand on everything, um, I don't think we would be here. Cause remember our approval was at the tail end of COVID. So our planning ability was extremely limited because they had kind of shut down SED and the, um, the approval process. So we had to be accelerated. And then on top of that, it's all renovation. So generally renovation change orders run in the ten to twelve percent range where we are at about five percent now, which is incredible. So, uh, yeah, we have, we have a lot to be, be thankful for.
I just remembered how we were waiting for our approval and they had shut down the satellite buses. Bring right and. And we were like, yeah, counting our number and where we were in the process for all of that. Yeah, to think of where we are today right now.
And we, we actually had to break down the project into tiny little pieces so that we could get them up there and get approval. Because we felt if we gazed on the whole project, we would be waiting forever. So we had to really manipulate and strategize in order to get the approval. So, um, yeah, very good.
Just improve Brad's work ethic, really.
But one thought, and I guess I'm assuming that on the tenth, when the ground, the groundbreaking, oh, the ceremony is, it's. Uh, Spencer, that our contractors will be there, I hope to celebrate with us. I would hope that we might also at some point have, have some kind of celebration to recognize and honor. Some of the contractors other than you guys, because you know, I, I think it's really great for them to know that we appreciate them. As usually boards don't interact with contractors, but I think we ought to do that.
That's an excellent point, actually. Were you talking to Doug today, by any chance?
No.
Doug, Doug, it is our, Doug and Jerry work for Paradi. They are fantastic. And he actually said that. He's like, I spent two years of my life here, uh, at projects and then everybody forgets about us. I said, we won't forget about you, Doug. So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, right.
Host?
Hi.
Upstaying, motion carries. Moving into our closing of the meetings and four viewpoints. Advocacy.
Uh, well, we have not met again since our prior meeting. I think, uh, we discussed that on the seventh.
Yeah.
Um, but just a quick sort of regional advocacy update. Um, West Pet kicked off their advocacy committee meeting, uh, at the beginning of this week on Monday. Um, gearing up for a, a big, uh, timeline. Um, also and had robust discussions about ways, um, that districts will want to, uh, aim to engage in, um, in state advocacy, local advocacy and all. And also, uh, discussing ways in which we can, um, engage in federal advocacy as well. So we will hear a lot more information coming down the pike about that. Um, the next thing we had, uh, this week was the NISBA Resolutions Committee met. Um, we deliberated over the three bylaw amendments and thirty-four resolutions that were proposed. So that packet, uh, will go out to all of the member districts and all of us, um, by the beginning of September. It should be out, I believe, by September eighth. So we will have time to review that. Um, and the next, uh, advocacy committee meeting is on the fifteenth for us to, uh, review those NISBA resolutions and then bring those recommendations to the full board. And that's, we can do that.
That's great. Audit.
Audit is meeting in, on October ninth or tenth, whatever that is.
Thank you. What about?
I, I think just, and we're meeting for the purpose of speaking with the external auditor about the external audit prior to presentation for.
So we'll present that information on that at the beginning.
For development?
Yeah, for instance, I meant actually reported at our last meeting. We haven't had a meeting since then. Our, um, cadence of our meeting schedule is actually going to be determined a little bit, um, by what the rest of these meetings looks like for us for the year. The, um, just a couple of notes for folks on that fall under onboard development. This is a little bit administrative, but of course, um. Trustees do need to update their BIOS if you have not done so yet for the new year. And, um, I think the goal is to try and make sure that those are in place by the time this year starts. Um, so please put that on your list if you haven't. Also, please do take a look at the, um, the district event calendar that we've been maintaining. Uh, we, um, have added a couple of dates, uh, September. Looks to be really busy. So please make sure that those dates are on your personal calendars. And if there are events that you're attending, if you could just be sure to add your names. I can only do it if I see it. Denise can only do it if she sees it. So we need folks to actually say if they're, if they're going to stop, to please list yourself so that we know what's happening. That's really all we have right now.
Thank you. Communications met today and we have this very meeting and we elected Sarah as our chairperson again.
Was, um, so yeah, so, uh, communications met this afternoon. Um, we, you know, reviewed, uh, our, uh, committee charge, um, and, and found that it was, we, we like where it is. We didn't have any updates for that. Um, we discussed, uh, meeting cadence. So we will go with a monthly meeting cadence. Um, and the first Monday of the month, beginning in October. Um, and then we, you know, we spent some time talking about the things that we, uh, that the committee actions from last year and ways to continue that work. And, um, some goals for the coming year and ways that we can increase our engagement with community, with different community groups. Um, and ways that we can share, uh, better share some of the process of, uh, the board, uh, of a trustee, of what board meetings entail. Um, get some of that information up onto our website, um, and looking forward to a, a robust year of. Improving and evolving our communications work, so. Did I miss anything?
No, um, just to dive into one of the points, I wanted to just, uh, let our trustees know, um, that the back to school things that have been announced. Um, we've kind of just, because there's so much on everyone. Uh, I think communications is just going to take over going to the back to school nights and multiply it to board leadership. And because I think there were vacations there and communications, um, to be consistent with the message that we're developing in other areas.
So.
So we won't be coming out and asking all of you.
Okay, so those, either on communications or board leadership should not worry about.
Can go up to there, yeah, yeah.
Next up is Allison.
Well, you're right. Policy.
Policy met, as I said, on Tuesday, uh, the nineteenth. We will be meeting the third Tuesday of every month, except for a couple of days that fall on, uh, during winter break. And fall on the day of the annual meeting and school vote, which we will try to combine alternate days. So that we're not working that day. We spent the majority of our meeting on Tuesday talking about also five, six, nine, five. Uh, we have other policies that are in pipeline, uh, including the policy on student privacy fifty-five fifty, which is a required policy. Um, at our next meeting, we expect to finalize, complete our work on that policy and others that are. Uh, that are waiting on our review. So we won't have anything for the September business meeting. Two won't be meeting until September sixteenth. Um, it is possible that we may ask for some things to be put on the work session agenda for first reading. If there are things that we want to get moving.
Um, I think that's it. So we will move into item eight point two. The adjournment of the meeting, recommended option that the Board of Education adjourns the meeting at eight twenty PM.
So moved.
Second.
Final question. All in favor?
Aye.
Host? Upstaying, motion carries.
Thank you.